All right, City Clerk, who are we missing yet? Looks like Commissioner O'Connor, there he is, and Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Moody is not going to be able to join us. He may join us a little bit later depending on how long it's going to take.
Five, 10 minutes.
Oh, there you are, Commissioner Moody.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna be able to stay on for just 30 minutes, okay?
All right, well, that should get us through at least the action items, Commissioner. Glad to have you here. All right, well, we'll go ahead and get started as Commissioner. There's Commissioner Jones. All right, well, good morning, everyone. We're gonna start off today. We have a couple of action items, and then we have three important briefings that we're gonna get to. And to start us off today, I'd like to share a proclamation in honor of Veterans Day, which is tomorrow. So I'm gonna read this proclamation, and then I'm gonna ask one of our city employees just to say a few words, and I'll give this proclamation to him. I know many of us have been actively involved in supporting our veterans in our community. Unfortunately, this year, we're not having the Veterans Parade, but it's important that we pause to really honor everyone who has served our country. So this proclamation reads, whereas at precisely the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month of 1918, World War I ended via an armistice at the hands of our nation's dedicated and selfless service members. And whereas in 1954, President Dwight D. Eisenhower commemorated the occasion by proclaiming November 11th as Veterans Day to recognize all those who have served our nation in uniform throughout our history. Whereas Grand Rapids is home to countless veterans who continue to serve our community, including those who capitalize on their uniformed experiences and serve on our city staff. And whereas we recognize the spouses and children and loved ones who stand beside our veterans, and we memorialize the heroes who have made the ultimate sacrifice for our great nation. And whereas we are reminded of our obligation to thank those who have worn the uniform and support those who currently wear the uniform, and to be eternally grateful for their courageous service to our country. Now therefore, I, Rosalind Bliss, Mayor of the City of Grand Rapids, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2020, as Veterans Day, and I urge all of our citizens to join us in honoring all of our vets. So with us today is Justin Kimora, Assistant Director there in our Mobile GR Department, and I would like to turn this over to him to just say a few words before we move forward with our action items. Hi, Justin.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. It's great to see you all this morning. So Mayor Bliss, thank you very much for your Veterans Day proclamation. I'm honored and humbled to be here today, and not so much in my normal role as the Assistant Mobile GR Director, but as a proud Coast Guard veteran, accepting your proclamation on behalf of the thousands of veterans in Grand Rapids, and especially for those continuing to serve our community as a member of the city team. In my short time here, I have gotten to know quite a few veterans in my department, and I plan to continue working with the Director of Equity Engagement to identify veterans across all departments and find more ways to recognize them. At least from a mobile GR standpoint, I can tell you that we have veterans in military spouses representing more than 73 years of service. Besides the military iteration of veteran, the dictionary literally defines a veteran as someone with long experience in occupation or skill. The veterans I've met on staff all fit this bill. They bring an established leadership and technical skills, as well as solid work ethic and strong character, all of which contributes to the city's work. So as we approach the 101st anniversary of Veterans Day, I want to personally thank all veterans, especially those that came before me, as I would not be here today without their service, and also thank those who continue to stand to watch and serve our great nation. Thank you again, Mayor.
So thank you so much.
Mayor, you were muted in time of talk.
Sorry about that. I just was saying thank you to Justin and reminding everyone to make sure that we pause tomorrow to thank our veterans. I know many of us, myself included, come from a long line of individuals who've served in the military and actually had served in World War II and Vietnam and Iraq War. So tomorrow, make sure we take some time to reach out and really thank those individuals for their service. So, thank you, Justin. All right, Commissioners, that will take us to our next item, and this is an action item before us today. This is a resolution approving a service agreement in the amount not to exceed $50,000 with the Grand Rapids Area Chamber of Commerce and the Grand Rapids Downtown Development Authority for the Grand Rapids Retail Retention and Recruitment Initiative. Can I get a motion?
Some of it.
All right, moved and supported. Turn it over to Mr. Gracia to tell us about this, as well as our partners. I see we have our partner from the Chamber here, and I don't know if there's someone from DJRI as well. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Gracia.
Yes, Joel, could you please also make Tim a panelist, please? Thank you. Well, good morning, Commissioners. Attached is the resolution approving a services agreement with the Grand Rapids Area Chamber of Commerce and the DDA for our Retail Retention and Attraction Initiative, with funding from the city not to exceed $50,000 for the period of November 10th, 2020 through November 10th, 2021. Now, as you recall, in October of 2019, the City Commission approved a services agreement for $100,000 with the Grand Rapids Chamber for the creation, the initial creation of this Retail Retention Specialist Position. That position was subsequently filled in January of 2020, and that person began their initial scope of work until March, when the COVID pandemic had a direct impact on that planned scope of work. However, the retail specialist, who you all know as Mr. Richard App, subsequently directed all attention to aiding local retailers and restaurants directly impacted by business closures and indoor seating limitations. I'd like to highlight a few of the positive outcomes, considering the impact of the pandemic and directing the work of the retail specialist has had on direct feet on the street and instrumental in representing and addressing the needs of our retailers and restaurants. In fact, the specialist was able to organize a group of approximately 500 restaurants to create what is now known as the Michigan Restaurant Promise. The Michigan Restaurant Promise is focused on upholding health and safety guidelines for restaurant employees and patrons to help keep their establishments open. Advocacy is another important success that this specialist position has been able to achieve. For example, advocacy was provided for the hooding of parking meters during the initial executive stay-at-home order. This encouraged patrons to support restaurants and small businesses without having to worry about paying for short-term parking. Another successful area is expanding social zones and districts that has been and will be a focus for the Retail Retention Specialist. In fact, work is currently underway with Alger Heights, Granville Avenue, Creston, West Fulton, Stockbridge, Madison Square, and Burton Heights Associations to assist them with establishing social zones in their district within their respective neighborhoods. We've certainly learned a lot over the last six months and the impact of our retailers, and it has guided our redefinition in our services agreement that we drafted up. And I'd like to highlight a few of those key areas that we worked into the agreement. First, expanding social zones and districts with the priority of activating those in city-defined neighborhoods of focus. Secondly, implementing parts of the Retail Recovery Plan as part of DDA's plan to activate vacant storefronts in the downtown area. Third, a retail business outreach strategy with a minimum of 200 retail visits, to a minimum of 200 retail businesses. A retail business advocacy that results in at least 20 retail advocacy assists, such as the hooding of parking meters that I described earlier. Last but not least, communication strategy to keep retailers informed of the resources and assistance that may become available. Total budget for this scope of work is approximately $137,000, and is supported by the city's investment of $50,000, and the DDA will consider approval of another $50,000 investment at their December 2020 board meeting. The Grand Rapids Chamber has provided the remainder of the budget as an in-kind contribution of approximately $37,000. The city was able to partner directly with the DDA and the Chamber on funding this new scope of work. However, the partner's support with the city was able to help us reduce our overall investment by $50,000, but still create a strong scope of work that will be beneficial to retailers with insights learned over the last six months and direct us for the future. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I also have our partners from the Chamber and DDA available for answering questions as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gracia. Did Dante or Tim want to add anything?
Thank you, Mayor, this is Dante. The Grand Rapids Chamber is very much looking forward to a continued scope of work for the Retail Retention and Attraction Specialists. Not more than ever, we're seeing the significant impact COVID has had on all retailers. And this isn't just focused downtown. This is all throughout our city, all of our neighborhood businesses. They're greatly impacted, specifically retailers. The online world is such a difficult competitor right now, given COVID. People, less people out there shopping, yet these retailers are vital to all of our neighborhoods and business districts. So we very much have the intentionality to provide the support to this very important sector in our city.
Thank you. Tim, anything to add before I open it up for questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. Just wanted to kind of build on what Jeremiah and Dante mentioned. When we launched into this partnership initiative, we felt very strongly that having a dedicated team to work on retail support, retention, and at that time, attraction was vital. I think now, given the world we're in and the impacts of the COVID pandemic, that that work is gonna become even more critical. And as Jeremiah outlined, the DDA is currently in a scope of work looking at a recovery strategy and putting together a plan to be proactive so that as we're moving into the, to the next phase of this, that we're being strategic about how we're thinking about downtown retail. I'd also add that I think it's important that Rich, in his position, will be working closely with Joe Augustinelli from the Grand Rapids Area Revitalization Task Force. And so I think bringing these two roles together and having these people really focus day-to-day on business and specifically retail needs is gonna be a good thing for the community. So we're excited to continue the partnership and happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you, Tim. All right, Commissioners, any questions for either Dante, Tim, or Mr. Gracia? Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to state my support for this. I think that now, more than ever, there's no doubt that we need to be very intentional, in a very unapologetic manner, in the effort to try to do all that we can to help the business, the small business community in particular. I think that the efforts that we can, any efforts that we can engage in, especially again, what I can appreciate is, yeah, there's the focus of the business community downtown, but again, throughout Grand Rapids, the fact that we have thriving neighborhood business districts that, you know, are hurting just as much as downtown. And so I am just very much in support of this, and am pleased to know that we're moving forward with this. And again, I would even suggest that we continue to look for even more partnerships so that we can do all that we can to come to the aid of small business owners.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Esasi?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jeremiah, and Dante, and Tim, and Rich for the presentation and providing us the update. It's hard to believe. I was at the Commission table last year, but it's hard to believe that we're kind of at this year mark, and things have changed very radically. I just have a few questions. The first one is, the information, you mentioned like the 200 visits, and we talked about the different scope of work. Is that information, I'm not familiar. Is this data from our businesses being held in, like, with our data pieces? Or is this something that the Chamber has, is something that DJRI has? Is it a shared sort of like CMS tool? Because I wanna, I wanna be able to see that sort of in a more of a broad picture. Would be helpful, I think, to our economic development team. So if you could ask that, answer that question for me. And then my second is just more of a request is, as the scope of work changes, we go into this next phase. A few of us were on the call this morning with Spectrum. You know, certainly rates increasing and continuing to make sure that people are socially distancing, wearing masks. But even more so as we go into different neighborhoods, where, you know, the realities of the structures and systems to support our downtown businesses are different than in some of the other neighborhoods that you talked about. You know, some of our neighborhoods, you know, in our Creston neighborhood and Plainfield, we don't have an area-specific plan. We're getting ready to go into the master planning process. So I just wanna know if we'll be able to get regular updates, knowing that some of those systems and structures are not necessarily the same in some of those different business districts. So those are my two questions, thank you.
Sure, Commissioner, I can answer. So for the tracking of those visits, yes, we have, we intend to refine where that was gonna be shared specifically. But I can tell you that as of this morning, we have our business assistance team that was activated early on in March. And I know that there are assistance that we just forwarded to our retail specialists this morning. And there is a link there that you record your follow-up with that individual company and who they refer to. And so I need to work with Becky Jo Glover to go back and get those since the inception of that, standing up that team. We do intend to have regular check-ins with our three partners, and any others that we subsequently find are gonna be important to tracking, not only the activity, but the results of our work. And as it relates to assisting those other areas, other neighborhoods, as you can see, we specifically called out in our work that we would prioritize activating those social districts and zones in those neighborhoods of focus and understand the extra assistance and lift that that requires. And we'll make sure that the specialist has a direct contact with our staff to assist to make sure that those things come to fruition. I don't know, Tim and Dante have anything else to add?
Commissioner Esasi, I would add that we're also, or I am also looking at the possibility of having this platform connect with Startup Space, which is a Kellek Foundation-funded initiative that's gonna be coordinated out of Star Garden. We're not there yet. All of the ESOs are starting to populate this CRM management system, if you will, for entrepreneurs and startups and so forth. It is, it is my intent right now that if we're all part of that, whether it's the Hispanic Chamber, Grab, the First, any organization that touches them, we're all able to see that. I think that makes our delivery of services even more powerful. So we will be exploring how this integrates, this Retail Retention and Attraction work integrates into that community-wide platform for ESOs.
Other than, real quick, we do have a pretty built-out database for retailers and ground-floor tenants that we use through our CRM software. And so we're constantly updating that and tweaking it as things change, but that'll be kind of part of what I think as partners that we're all gonna share and utilize to communicate specifically with our ground-floor businesses.
Thanks, Tim. Commissioner Ruppert? Did you, you're good? Okay, who else did I see? Commissioner Lanier?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you so much, guys, for the presentation. I think I wanna piggyback on Commissioner Esasi's question regarding kind of the tracking. So is it safe then? I know that there are a lot of businesses who unfortunately are probably going to experience some more challenges with this latest kind of influx in the virus. Is it safe then for businesses who have questions or who are looking for resources to send them maybe then to 311 as a starting point to get their questions answered? And then from there, their triage? I think it would be helpful for me, I think, to know kind of where's the one stop? And then from there, knowing and understanding that they would be taken care of from the beginning to end. I think, you know, I can give out individual numbers, but I also think that there's, it sounds like you're trying to coordinate it a little bit with this tracking system. So I just wanna make sure I'm clear about where's the best place to send people who may want to sit down with someone, or?
Yeah, so I would say to you, she froze, Commissioner. I'm not sure if she's still speaking.
I'm sorry, I'm done, go ahead.
Okay. So yes, that is a very great suggestion about utilizing the 301 Business Assistance Team for those new inquiries, right? One of the things that we need to iron out are tracking those when their continued touchpoints with that company as a follow-up. So sometimes it'll take two or three or four different actions, and then we need to track that to make sure that we keep those touchpoints in place, and then use that to inform even some of the advocacy pieces that I mentioned are part of the agreement as well.
Thank you.
Jeremiah, the only thing I would add is that you are correct. There's no one entry point. The entry point for access to this resource comes at different stages and with different partners and neighborhood associations and so forth. I think the important piece is that we recognize that the information or the assistance needed is changing on a day-to-day basis, you know, a new executive order, you know, new requirement. So we will have that, but, you know, 100 other ways to connect with our retail community. And so just to make sure everyone has access to the resource and information.
Yeah, and I will add too, part of our refined agreement will ask Mr. App to provide us weekly written reports, right? So that we can start to aggregate that information as well.
Thank you. Great, thanks. Commissioner O'Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to express my support for Mr. App. I know a lot of folks in the hospitality business that have interacted with him as a role, and he's been a wealth of resource and advocacy for the work that we're all doing to try to, try to keep our hospitality community open here in Grand Rapids. So I'm just excited to have him continue in this role and continue doing his good work.
Thanks, Commissioner. I will add as well that I appreciate not just Mr. App, but all of our partners who've come together, even beyond the Chamber and the Right Place, individuals and organizations that have come together through this pandemic to support our, not just hospitality industry, but our small business owners. So really appreciate the collaboration. Commissioners, any final questions or comments? I see some energy to make a comment, and then I'll ask our City Clerk to call question. City Manager?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind the Commission, this is another example of strategy we had in place prior to the pandemic that we found to be even more relevant since the pandemic, just like our other discussions around community engagement or crime prevention. Even prior to COVID, we found that we had got a jumpstart on it. I think this is another area we knew even in economic expansion, we needed to focus more on retail support, both recruitment and retention, and that has just been underscored to be even a higher need during the pandemic. And so I just think this confirms that we are on the right track with our strategy. We would be doing this even without the pandemic.
Thank you, City Manager. All right, with that, I'll turn to our City Clerk.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Esasi?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss.
Yes, it carries. All right, Commissioners, next that will take us to a resolution recommending approval by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission of a Social District Permit Application pursuant to Public Act 124 of 2020. Can I get a motion?
Some of it.
Good work.
All right, moved and supported. We have Mr. Canfield with us today to tell us about this item.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I don't think you can see me. I'm having a bit of technical difficulty with my new setup, but I can describe this as the standard resolution that you have approved on roughly a half dozen occasions for different businesses at prior meetings. And this particular resolution would recommend approval by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission of a Social District Permit Application from the Grand Rapids County Convention Arena Authority. And just as a quick reminder, the social districts are the shared alcohol consumption areas where multiple businesses conserve special containers for consumption in those areas.
All right, thank you, Mr. Canfield. Commissioners, any questions? Pretty straightforward. All right, seeing none, I'll turn to our clerk for the vote.
Commissioner Lanier?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Esasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, thank you, Mr. Canfield. All right, Commissioners, next that will take us to our three briefings and updates. So we have an update on the election, so our City Clerk will do that. We have an update on crime prevention and technology, so we have the chief and his team for that. And then we have an update on water sewer study and our upcoming budget. So what I'd like to do is we'll move through these three presentations, and then at the end, we'll open it up for questions or comments. Again, these are just updates, they're not action items, so just to be clear about that. And so we'll start today. Let me see if the City Manager has anything to add before we move into the briefing. City Manager, anything to add before I turn it over to the City Clerk? All right, I think that's a no, so I'll turn it over to... Okay, thank you, City Manager. So our City Clerk, who's had a very busy week, as has many people who have helped us with the election that took place a week ago today, just wanna thank everyone for their work and their service. And now I'll turn it over to Mr. Joel Hunder.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it's hard to believe that was a week ago already. If you count the AV County Board, it maybe was only like five days ago. But so, first of all, I just wanted you to see, kind of, at the bottom of the screen, I have GR Votes. That's kind of the branding that we had, if you've noticed, on Facebook and various other documents. And I'll give a shout-out to Well Design a little bit later, but that we came up early on with a logo and a theme for the year of GR Votes. And we saw a lot of voters participating through cheering on social media and everything. So we had that kind of feel of GR Votes through the whole thing. And we'll continue that theme for future elections. So 60%, 66% turnout on Election Day between absentees or full voter turnout. So comparing that to other years, if you look back in 2000, it was about 61%. 2004 was kind of the modern high level at 69%. In 2008 was a 66% turnout. And then 2012 dropped back down to 61%. And 2016 bumped up to 63%, and now we're up to 66% again. So it kind of, it kind of shows where presidential elections have gone. So not the highest that we've had in recent, in the last 20 years, but certainly up there with other elections as well, especially when you're talking about high absentees and a pandemic that we had that high, that good turnout. So talking about voter registration, at the last meeting, when I talked about voter registration, I said we were at about 148,000 registered voters. That's compared to about 136,000 compared to in 2016. So not only do we, so if you look at that 66%, that means we have a raw number of more people voting. So we went up from 89,000 or so people voting to 97,000 people participating. So that's a, that's a huge change when you look at raw numbers. This is, we are definitely at the highest ever we've had for registered voters, highest we've ever had for actual people voting. But also with the passage of Proposal 3 in 2018, one of the options now for voters is, in the 14 days before the election, and up until, including Election Day, you can still register to vote and vote on Election Day. So that's a huge change. If you remember, before Proposal 3, there's a 30-day cutoff for voter registration. So that adds a challenge to elections because your voter list is changing by the minute. And I'll give you an example when we get, when I'm done with the slide. So in the 14-day in-person voter registration, 940 voters registered to vote. So that's from October 20th until Election Day, 940 voters had to register to vote. That means they had to come into the clerk's office at City Hall or Election Central in order to do that. They couldn't register any other way. 511 of those voters registered to vote on Election Day at City Hall or Election Central. And when I give out my thanks later, it wasn't just clerk's office. We had a whole bunch of others that were helping us. So voter registration was set up at City Hall for voters to first register... So voter registration was set up at City Hall for voters to first register to vote on the Monroe level of City Hall. Then the voter could be, the new voter could now could either go back to their precinct or go to the ninth floor of City Hall to vote an absentee ballot. The Monroe level of the parking ramp was used for line management. So you can kind of see um what the parking let ramp looked at. If you weren't there, that area you you see all the stanchions set up is basically the one hour parking area in the uh in the Monroe level parking ramp. Um, and the Election Central was also set up for line management and issues of ballots, the second floor fitness room with voting in the training room. And we never really got outside of that room, so we weren't line people. We had social distancing in mind um during this whole process. And also, we found during this process, um especially like the day before the election, we were doing absentee votes. The line never really got longer than an hour and a half. And that, and it's in talking to voters that I saw in the elevator or talking in the hallway, um, all of them were seeing these huge lines around the country, you know, eight to nine hours, seven hours. Um, everybody was didn't seem too upset with um with an hour and a half wait. And we tried to get people as through as quickly as possible. You can see on the top picture of what the city hall, with the city chamber, um, city commission chambers looked like for the week before the election with voting booths. Um, you can, you can, so um, so just know that the the chambers were used for the whole week um before, actually probably the ten days before the election as a as a voting area. I think Commissioner Sassi saw it firsthand um on on at our last meeting what was going on up there. On Election Day, so in precinct voting, um, just to remember that anything is unofficial right now. The election is being canvassed as we speak by the Kent County Board of Canvassers, so all numbers are unofficial. This is another part of the checks and balances in the election process. So just just remember, everything is the election is not over in Kent County till the Board of Canvassers does their work, and then the State Board of Canvassers has to do their work. Um, so almost thirty-nine thousand voters went to the precinct. Including that thirty-nine thousand, there was about seventeen hundred, well, twenty-five hundred that received an absentee ballot, but they either surrendered it at the precinct or um filled out an affidavit that they did not return their um absentee ballot. So so when I talk about absentee percent turnout, that would mean a lot of those that didn't return their absentee ballot during the absentee process went to the precincts to vote. We did have some election workers that were not able to work. They um, you know, either they woke up that morning not feeling well or um were uncomfortable to work, but we had a, but the staff, the clerk staff quickly started calling the standby list of trained workers. We had a a large list of um trained workers. If you remember from some of my previous presentations, uh, we had just a unbelievable um um amount of people that wanted to be election workers to assist because they knew that there was a need. And so we didn't have places for everybody, but we did have a standby list, so we were able to go through that standby list and um place people into precincts. We had a a couple tabular issues, one in the third ward, one in the second ward. There was an issue with the tabular heads. They were changed out and um that was in the morning. Voting reserve ballots that went into the auxiliary bin were tabulated. The best part of the day, and I think we we all were preparing for um the worst, um, but there were no complaints of intimidation, harassment, or challenger issues. As a whole, Election Day went very smoothly. Um, there were no long, large lines. Everybody went through the process um of voting and to have no complaints of um of intimidation, harassment, or any challenger issues um where we didn't have to send out the attorney's office or any other um uh at that level, I think speaks well to um the Grand Rapids community and um vote in our election workers as a whole. In the absentee um process, so here's a couple pictures that shows what it looked like at DeVos Place. And goes to watch the news for like Election Day and the day after, um, and the pre-processing, I think we got a good inside view of what the um exhibit hall A looked like. I think the community got to see um an absentee voting counting board. A lot of times, that's not something that's really broadcast on the on the news or, you know, to see on the inside, but um obviously, we gave a lot of access during the non-sequestered um part of absentee voter counting board. So the pre-processing of absentee ballots was held on Monday before the election per state law. That process went really well. We we got through almost a a fair amount of the precincts that we could um open up, check the envelopes, get the secrecy sleeves out of the envelope to prepare to for Tuesday. If we didn't have that, um things would have taken even longer on Tuesday. Um, so, but then the other part of it was ballots and envelopes needed to be counted on Tuesday morning again. So we need to work through that process to to figure out a way if the if this, so one thing to remember, this state law for pre-processing was only good legislation for this election. So now that is no longer in state law. So the legislature would have to reenact this, and so I think they're going to be going through um through data to see what community, there was fifty-one um communities that were large enough, so twenty-five thousand of population or larger that could use the pre-processing. So I think the legislature will go through reports and and talk with the Secretary of State's office to see if this is going to be something that they're they're going to put into law. Um, without it, if we stay at these kind of absentee numbers, we we have to have something, and the one day wasn't enough. The clerks have been asking for for longer processing times beforehand because because you saw the media results of of ballots dumping or ballots received, you know, in the middle of the night and stuff. That's not just ballots being found. So voters can vote until eight o'clock at night. So we had we had city staff that was posted at all the drop boxes at eight o'clock at night to so that voters had the till the very last moment to return their absentee ballots at eight o'clock at night. So those had to go back to City Hall. They had to be, have their signatures checked, had to be received in, had to be sorted by precinct. Um, so that takes time and that, so those don't go to the AB County Board till that's all done. So so you can think of a city like Detroit or Grand Rapids where you have those large amounts. So those are, those are legally voted ballots that have to go to the AB County Board that all come at one time. So it's not just um ballots that are found. Those are all ballots that were being processed um that were received at eight o'clock PM. So as of not including any any person who voted as their absentee ballot or did not vote their absentee ballot but went to the precinct to vote, ninety percent, ninety-two percent of ballots issued were received by the clerk's office. That number marks very well with um previous elections, um when we had a very smaller amount of um absentee ballots. So I think that is a real good number to see. Also, you can see a picture of a Dropbox. We're still trying to get the data of how many voters used a Dropbox or dropped off their ballot in person versus sending their um ballot back by mail. But we, what we did see was the message, the messages from the Secretary of State, the county clerk, and the city clerk in the last two weeks not to mail your ballot back, we saw um mail-in ballots um drastically drastically drop um in absent, and then the drop boxes really increased. So I think the voters had a good confidence that of the drop boxes, and I'm anxious to see when we can finally extrapolate those numbers. Um if we can, if we can see how many ballots were received by both ways. So we use business reply mail, so there's a way that we can we can track that, but we, you know, we're still getting that information. So the City of Grand Rapids completed an unofficial ballot tabulation and forward to the County Board of Canvassers, the unofficial ballot tabulation on November fourth. An internal audit by the clerk's office identified a point eight nine percent variance between the ballots tabulated for all precincts and the election reports. So the Board of Canvassers, as part of their process of checks and balances, um, as stated in election law, may remedy any variances. And it's not, it's not just variances in the City of Grand Rapids. Other communities also um have those variances, and we have always had that in um other elections as well. So the the Board of Canvassers are doing their work. Um, we'll we'll cooperate and work with them to um remedy any variances. So here, this is the part, um, like, like any Academy Award or Emmys, this is my part where I want to thank, and I I myself, as the city clerk, am so thankful for everybody that has participated in this process. Um, if I left anybody out, my my forgiveness about you are, I will pre-thank you here. So first of all, I want to start with my staff. They have been amazing since, um, well, all the way since since March, when we had a March presidential primary. So we've been, since January first or the end of December, we have been in election mode in the clerk's office this this whole time. Um, in three good-sized elections as well. They have put in a ton of time, a ton of hours. We, you know, basically the three weeks before the election, actually when absent, just as absentees were going out, cer- certain staff were working um twelve-hour shifts five days a week, and then we moved into working Saturdays and Sundays. We had a couple, you know, we had a couple Sunday um souls to the polls events. We had the Saturday before the election where we could vote. Then they were working on the Sunday before the election, getting the e-poll books and um tabulators, or I mean, the e-poll books and tablets ready for Election Day. Um, and a lot of them were working on weekends to get voter registrations into the system, working um from home after hours, getting voter registrations um into the system. So the clerk's office is, um, my staff has been amazing during all this this process and have put in a in an amount of time and effort. And also remember, a lot, remember I talked about how many people were in person? This was at, probably at personal risk for some of them also because of, you know, during COVID, we had a lot of departments that were do, working from home. We had a couple staff members who worked a lot of times all the way since March at the clerk's office. Um, and we were in contact with a lot of um voters from outside, as a lot of departments are doing things, but um by playman only or not having I'm not having a lot of contact with the public. The city clerk staff had a lot of contact with the public. I'm so thankful for um that we went through this election season without any positive cases in the city clerk's office. Um the community was great by wearing masks, and we we did physical distancing and um we we got, you know, we went through um these last few weeks and through the August primary as well and the March election with high contact with a lot of voters that are um during this this process. So I'm so thankful for our staff that they have been able to stay healthy through um all of this. Um, to the mayor and city commission, I thank you so much for your support um through this whole time of of answering questions with the community, asking me questions so we can get answers from the community, for sharing stuff on your social media as we as we got stuff out. Um, we just thank you for for your support through that. Um, to all the amazing election workers, for those who um took a, heard the mayor and I make a call to call for action, as we found out in for the August primary that um that we were finding that workers were not going to be able to work because of their vulnerabilities, um that we had people step up, that we had an amazing amount of people that were new workers that we could train for election workers. And to the entire city staff that that worked in the precincts, the absent voter counting board, the receiving board, voter registration slash absentee voting on Monday and Tuesday, and close the absentee drop boxes at eight o'clock PM Election Day. There's so much that our our city clerk staff of eleven can't do that we needed a lot of extra help. And so I'm thankful for the Election Day of service that we allow um city staff to um work for the elections, especially on the Monday and Tuesday of the voter registration and doing absentee voting that we trained to to work, um, working with qualified voter file to voter registration. Our our clerk staff was so busy getting ready, you know, delivering equipment and getting things out. Um, it's ju, it's just an amazing team effort. And also thanks thankful for our um city workers that are our election temps, that are EPB rovers. Um, the amazing workers that worked after their shifts on election, especially the election techs. They come in like three weeks before the election and through um this week, they come in after work and they're testing equipment. They're getting the all the stuff set. So um just amazing amount of people that that are city staff that that supplant, supplant the um the city clerk staff. And then all the various departments that support our efforts, three-one-one, Becky, Joe, and Angela and their team have been amazing through this this whole process. Um, but you know, Becky Joe's, I think, theme is what else, what else can we do to help, which puts a lot of um gives me a lot of um, puts me at ease because they've taken more and more calls off our our um off our city staff because, so we've been trying to figure out what can three-one-one handle at a at a greater rate that that we can have higher level calls that the city clerk staff needs to answer. And so that's been a a great partnership as we continue to do more. Um, the Executive Department City Manager of Washington and his team of being supportive of letting um employees help out during their work shifts and and being um as we move forward, it's been a great partnership. There's um the city attorney, I'm so glad that I didn't need her on Election Day and her team. So um, but they were ready and and willing and able to go out and assess situations, but um it's the best thing to have an attorney and not need an attorney. Um, so so that's a good thing. Um, to my floormate, um, in the treasurer's office, it got a little um two weeks out before the election, it started getting busier on our floor, and we were able able to pivot. So um, to keep the traffic off the second floor, we don't have a lot of space there, so but we were able to um pivot in the last ten days to use different parts of the city hall between the Calder level, the Monroe level, and the ninth floor that we could um mitigate um traffic on the second floor. Um, Communication Department, we're just thankful for um all the communications that got out during that, um for Steve Gittar to be at my right hip on um in the absentee counting board so we can get out messages to the media. Um, Facilities, a very special thankful to Phil Wheeler Wheeler and Steve Hammond and Facilities for um helping me with the with the drop boxes, for fabricating, getting them out, and getting cameras and monitoring. Um, that was helpful. Police Department, Fire Department, Emergency Management, to be all ready on Election Day if problems, um, if problems um evolved. We we were prepared, we were planned, we had contingency plans in place um for a lot of contingency. So thank you to um all those departments. The Grand Rapids Public Library for um letting us have the drop boxes. That was an early discussion. They're like, hey, we would like to be part. How can the library help? And so that was one way. And those were, you know, those four Dropbox locations, those people in those communities, in those neighborhoods knew where their library was, so we didn't have to rely on addresses. We can just say, go to this library. And I'll tell you what, people found those drop boxes um even in the first day after they got mailed. To Mobile GR for letting us use the the parking garage and and the other other departments underside, Mobile GR, um, from signs and signals that they went out and put out all the big signs the night before the election and picked them all up. That's been a great partnership over the last couple of years. And then Parks and Recreation, Public Services, Special Events, our um cohabitators at um two oh one market for their patience and support as we, as we take over the loading dock, as we take over the elevators and the floors and everything like that um for their understanding and for their support um with their staffs as we um went through Election Day. I'm also so grateful for all of our polling locations for opening their doors to the community for voting. Some of them, um, like Grand Rapids Public Schools and a lot of churches haven't opened their doors really to the public during, since, you know, since March, since March. And they opened up their doors for voting on um in August and and for and for November. I'm so grateful that they continued to allow us to um to be, to to use their facilities. A couple of facilities we couldn't use, obviously, because of, you know, because they're retirement homes, and we had to get new locations. So I'm so grateful and thankful for alls, all those that um opened their doors um to their to their neighbors. Um, special thank you to Commissioner Sassi and um Stacy Sell and the Latina Network of West Michigan for for providing interpreters in certain precincts. I think that's a um, that's that's very beneficial, and we'll have a conversation afterwards on how we can um, how we can partner more and 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 have be better prepared for future elections. So I'm, I am so grateful for um their support. Um, to Josh Lefingwell and um Well Design for developing and implementing a comprehensive GR Votes branding and messaging. And along the, along that with um Outfront Media for donations of in-kind donations of billboard space in the in the two weeks before the elections as well. Actually, I think it's more than that. But but the, thank you to Well Design for coming up with a great GR Votes um message. And we were able to um put those messages out for other groups to um use that messaging as well. And we saw, we did our our um our branding in English and Spanish, and we we bought Facebook ads and Instagram ads with um English and Spanish. I'm not sure how all the Facebook algorithms work for knowing which ones to go, but I did see um some of our ads and our our placements in Spanish as well, so I know they were out there. And then finally, but not to take anybody else that I may have forgot, to all the amazing community, community organizations. Um, I'm not going to list them all because there's been so many, and there's even things that I don't know that was happening. But a lot of them spent the whole year registering voters, canvassing neighborhoods, holding events, hosting valuable online concert conversations, and providing election protection in the precincts and all other election activities. Um, and I know there's just a whole bunch of groups that supported um the clerk's office, and I don't even know all of them that did, you know, organizing, you know, driving people to the polls and and um assisting with all that. The clerk's office, and I all that. The clerk's office, and I know the, and I'll speak for the voters at Grand Rapids as well. Thank you for all of your organizations and all you did to, to cut through a lot of disinformation that was out there that we could, that we could provide information that was, that was coming from, from the sources of, of the, you know, the clerk's office or from city commissioners as we went through this process. So, it is just, I'm humbled because obviously, you know, I'm, I'm on camera, but the, the support of the community and all these amazing organizations, they've, they've done a ton of work and, and they don't do it for thanks, they don't do it for that. They do it to help, help voters. And a lot, a lot of voters wouldn't be registered, they wouldn't be able to vote, or they wouldn't have the correct information if it wasn't for these amazing organizations. And I, as the city clerk, am entirely grateful for everybody who I thanked and anybody who I may have missed. I am truly, truly humbled by everybody's participation. Just finally, so there were two charter amendments on the, on the ballot. So unofficially, both charter, Grand Rapids Charter Amendments passed. Charter Amendment One requires moving city elections from the odd year to the even year. So that would be the mayor, the comptroller, the city commission and the library board to the even year. Charter Amendment Two removes the ability to win a city elected position automatically in August primary, which means then for all future city elections, who, if there is a multiple amount of candidates. So, for example, if it's a mayor's race, if there's more than, if there's more than two candidates, then there will be a primary and the top two vote getters would go to the November election. There would be no more automatic wins in the August primary. If there's only two candidates for a, one, then there won't be a primary, it would just go to November like we've had before. So after certification by the Board of Canvassers, two printed copies of the charter language and the results needs to be sent to the Secretary of State and the County Clerk. And then the city attorney and city clerk are reviewing the timeline for implementing Charter Amendment Number One. No other implementa, implementation is needed for Amendment Two. So with that, I will open it up to questions or comments.
So Joel, if you're, if you're okay, I'd actually like to hold questions or comments until we get through the other presentations and then do them all at the end. Just if, if you're okay with that?
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay. We just have a lot of information to get through and I want to make sure that we have time to do that and then we can come back and, and make any final questions or comments on the items. So next we have an update on crime prevention and technology. So I'll turn it over to Chief, let me see, I, let me make sure I can see everybody. So Chief Payne, and it looks like Deputy Chief Kittle is here as well.
Yeah, thank you Mayor and Commissioners and City Manager for the opportunity to provide this update. Next slide please. As you can see, the city is already making major investments in crime prevention through the police department. And this existing investment emphasizes personnel and are very light on, or, for active technology that could save lives to the tune of the investment in personnel is over $17 million that we've invested so far. Next slide please. The crime prevention investment through the police department is part of an even, even larger total city crime prevention investment. And when we continue to implement our neighborhood policing, we're, we're gonna, we will see that number go up as officers are more dedicated to crime prevention. Next slide. But even with the significant crime prevention investment, gun crime in Grand Rapids has increased dramatically over the past year. We're seeing weapons firing up 210%, shot fired 129%, murder attempts 195%. Next slide. The police department is implementing innovative crime prevention approaches, Operation Safe Neighborhoods. As you can see, we had several weekends in response to increase in violence where we placed additional personnel, some on overtime, some on straight time to address significant incidents where we strategically went out and did engagement along with enforcement and we removed roughly 15 firearms, illegal firearms during that time. And now Deputy Chief Kittle will take us through crime prevention opportunities and why we're looking to invest. Deputy Chief Kittle?
Thank you Chief and good morning Mayor and Commissioners. There are several reasons to invest in technology. First, the police department is not going to ignore the significant increase in gun violence that is affecting our neighborhoods. We believe technology can be deployed fairly quickly and has the potential to disrupt the current trends. Technology isn't always cheap, but we do believe it is cost effective. We wanted to clear though, it's not technology or bust. We will continue to use other strategies to address crime. But technology can help our officers respond more quickly and efficiently. And technology can help reduce the level of violence so that other strategies can take root. Technology opportunities like gunshot detection have proven to reduce gun crime in other communities. ShotSpotter, as you know, is a series of sensors positioned within a defined area that detect gunfire. An expert review confirms that gunfire can point, pinpoint the location within 82 feet. That's a typo, not eight feet. And ShotSpotter is in use in more than 100 cities across the country. There is some concern that this technology is Big Brother surveillance. That is simply not true. Human voices and street noise will never trigger a sensor because they don't produce an instantaneous sharp sound and they are not loud enough to be picked up by at least three sensors. Only when at least three sensors detect a gunshot-like sound at the same time do they send a short audio snippet to the review center. All sensor audio is permanently deleted after 30 hours and never heard by human unless it was accompanied by a loud impulse sound thought to be a gunshot. And live streaming of audio is just not possible. A policing project at the New York University Law School conducted an independent privacy audit and their conclusion was that ShotSpotter presents an extremely low risk of audio surveillance. That report is available if anyone would like to see it. I can get you, get your copy of that. You've seen this slide before. Our proposed deployment is to cover four square miles for a total of two years and a cost of $500,000. The coverage is based on data from our last three years. We'd be looking at three square miles on the southeast side and then one square mile on the northwest side. And these boundaries would cover on average 50% of the city's gun-related crime. ShotSpotter is not a new discussion in Grand Rapids. We've been researching and considering it since 2013. Recent presentations were given to the police chief's advisory team and the Public Safety Committee, both providing support for the acquisition of this technology. The ACLU has reviewed ShotSpotter and provided policy recommendations that we will include in our policy and protocols. Some of the recommendations included seeking approval for any changes or expansion in the future, developing performance measures for success, and establishing audit protocols that would be made public. We also had two virtual town halls on November 2nd and 5th. These events attracted over 7,000 viewers across multiple channels. You can see some of the viewing statistics here. I am not a social media statistical guru, but the chart shows here 163 live viewers across both town halls. And then if you look at the post engagement scores, these are any interactions that viewers take regarding the post, whether it's a comment, sharing, viewing, et cetera. The scores are over 160 and 179. We look back at the average post engagement score of the last 50 videos that the city shared and that was 21. So a score of 160, 179 is, is significant. People are interested and paying attention. We did receive mixed reviews. We had a lot of questions and a lot of comments. In general, most of those who, who opposed thought that the funding could be better used for social programs. And those in favor really expressed frustration with the gun violence in their neighborhood. It is our recommendation that we enter into a two-year contract with ShotSpotter for four square miles of coverage as a pilot program to reduce gun violence in Grand Rapids. We will return to you next week to the Fiscal Committee for a procurement review. And then also to the community as a whole where we will address the operational and data management protocols as required by the city's surveillance policy. We still think that the drone or UAS technology can also have an impact on the department's effectiveness and efficiency. And we will be moving forward toward approval of this technology in the near future. We will be sure to seek community engagement on this project as well, just as a review. And we're interested in a first responder type system, but also to do vehicle crash investigations, crime scene investigations, critical incidents, searches for fleeing such suspects, sorry, and training exercises. And we believe excluding personnel, we can get up and running with that for about $155,000. And that wraps up our update. I know we'll be happy to take questions after the final, the final briefing. And we do have ShotSpotter representatives with us if we have any questions that we're unable to answer.
All right. Thank you Deputy Chief. All right. Let's go to the third presentation and then we'll open up for questions or comments. So the third presentation is by Ms. Carter to talk about water and sewer rate study and plans for upcoming budget.
Wonderful. Thank you for the introduction. Good morning, Mayor, City Manager and Commissioners. I just wanted to introduce myself really quickly. My name is Vanessa Carter. So I have actually worked under Ms. Molly Clarin for the last five and a half years as a financial analyst and then the last year in the acting utility financial officer role. So this is actually my sixth rate study that I've been a part of. But my first one that I get the privilege to present, it's also a unique one. Obviously, I am at home in quarantine with a sick husband and two little boys. So it's going to be a, an interesting year. There's always a election surprise in October and there's always a rate study surprise too. So let me go ahead and share my presentation here, hopefully. Let's see, screen one. I had to move this over. This is my first time using this, so bear with me here as well.
Yep, I made you a presenter, so you should be able to share your screen now. There you go.
Thank you very much. So does everyone see my presentation at this point? I think it looks good. Okay. All right. So yes, I also wanted to say thank you again. Also, this is a true group effort on behalf of all the utilities and all of our staff throughout the city. We start working on this in about June, July with fiscal year end. So wrapping up in November, it's a long push and a long haul. So this is our 44th annual preliminary rate study. It, this, the methodology that we use was actually established in 1976 and amended in 1997. So it's a long established process, it's a long drawn out process for us, but it's really a rewarding experience for us to address all the concerns that we have throughout the department as well as affordability and everything for our customers as well. I wanted to put for the background, a picture of our digester tanks because that is, of course, just like last year, that is a big conversation for this year's rate. So this is a photo of the three digester tanks, including the concentrated waste tank. And then that white tank that's in the front, that's actually the CO2 release tank, which removes carbon dioxide as part of the phosphorus recovery process. So as you can see, this picture was taken in a beautiful sunny day in October and there's been a lot of progress out at the wastewater recovery facility. So it's been, it's been a very good year. So this is what the, the current system looks like at, at this point in time. If we want to move forward, let's see here. Maybe. There we go. Okay. So then we always kind of start with just a 15-year average of the overall system average for the rate changes. So on the left side, you can see the water supply system. So the overall 15-year system average is 1.84%. This year's 2020 preliminary proposed rate is 0.62% rate increase for the system average. On the sewer side, you can see that the overall 15-year system average is 5.19% with this year's proposed rate at 7.92%. This is just with the preliminary rate study. And this is just kind of a good history where you can see that overall system average changed for the last 15 years. We also like to include this slide as the building blocks of the revenue requirement. I know this may be the first process for several people for, that are listening in as well for the rate study. So you can kind of think of, these are the building blocks that kind of balance out on a scale for the rate changes each year. So on the left, we have the revenues. Those include revenue credits such as permits and service fees for our departments. It also includes that penalty revenue that we collect from retail customer citizens. And so that is actually used directly to fund back the city and customer community circuit breaker as well as the individual circuit breaker, which we'll talk about a little bit later on. The study also factors on that side, build volume in meters, which is basically the study's way of saying, what can we expect to collect this year? On the expense side, you have your operation and maintenance expenses and then you have your fixed assets. Those are those assets that we put into service each year where we, we collect depreciation and return on investment on. You can think of those as, they may, they may impact a customer community directly, like such as putting a water main in the city of Walker only, for an example. Or they might be what we call zone gated, which means that it might be a pumping station that impacts, it's, it's located in one customer community, but it might impact several, it might pump for several areas. So that would be what we call zone gated to those areas. Or it may be what we call integrated. Integrated assets impact all of the customer communities. There are main assets that are, that are pumping and distributing water and sewer that directly impact every customer community. So on the water side, that would be like the Lake Michigan Filtration Plant. On the sewer side, that'd be assets that are held at the wastewater resource recovery facility, for an example. The study also has other miscellaneous items that includes our combined sewer overflow debt as well as any payback agreement. So obviously, when you have expenses and revenues, you want them to kind of balance out so that they don't impact the rate change. But that's kind of where it, it will influence the revenue requirement and those rate changes per customer community. So build volume, in 2010, we amended the study to include using the three-year build volume average. You can see that on the black line for both of these graphs. In doing so, you can see it kind of shaves off those peaks and valleys so that you don't have so much variation each year. It's kind of just a rate smoothing effect. So the black line is what you're going to want to focus on for both. So on the left side here, we have the water system. The water volume was down 7.89% over 2019. The three-year average water volume though, which is what built the rates, was down 2.02%. You can also see that, as I mentioned, you can kind of see on that blue line too, that, just those variations and how that helps throughout the study. The, the volume being down this year was largely due to a very wet weather conditions that we had last summer. So this starts July 1st of 2019 through June 30th of 2020. So we've been having this conversation for a long time with our customer community members because we had a very wet spring and summer and late fall last year as well, which impacted build volume. And then obviously went into that COVID-19 stay home, stay safe order too. So on the right side, you can see the sewer volume. Sewer volumes were down 4.12% over 2019 with the three-year average volume down 0.84%. You can also see that, you may notice, there's a lot less variability in the sewer side. And that's because we actually built sewer using what we call the sewer cap. And that's calculated using the third quarter winter average for water usage because third quarter winter average, people aren't watering their lawns, they're not washing their vehicles outside. So they have a much better accuracy in measuring what true sewer volumes are. So it's just something to kind of note there as well. So overall, the water system is proposing a 0.62% rate increase. So here are the factors of what drove that rate increase. This is a unique year. You can see that my number one factor here for the rate increase is build volume. As we talked about in the last slide, it was down 2.02%. The further we go along here, you'll see that there would have been a rate decrease had we not had a three-year average that is truly down for this year. And it's also riding into obviously the fall with COVID-19 as well. So it's been a very interesting year with, with how the study shook out for water. On the other operating revenue side, service fees and like contractor fees and such were down, which as to be expected, you know, there was very little work being done during that stay home, stay safe order, especially very little service fees and such as well. In addition, during the stay home, stay safe order, we waived penalty revenue for the, the customer communities as well. So in doing so, that reduced the circuit breaker funds that were available for usage and lowering those rates for our customer communities. In addition, assets were up as well and it's mostly integrative, what we talked about before, work at the Lake Michigan Filtration Plant, which means that it impacts all of our customer communities across the board. Net, it was up about 81,000, but largely that was due to some positive factors for our rate payers, that ROI was down this year due to market conditions. So it wasn't as big of an impact as it could have been using, let's say, ROI from last year. But that did have an impact. Some impact in the decreases for the rates. However, our department did a really great job at cost cutting efforts and being fiscally job at cost-cutting efforts and being fiscally responsible, especially during this, knowing that we had a build volume reduction, and then, of course, during the stay-home, stay-safe order as well. Last year in 2019, we had a significant, it was $1.5 million in construction in progress, and that's, that's basically longer-term maintenance items on fixed assets that were moved into operations and maintenance because they're not capitalizable. That was pretty significant in 2019, so this year it was down significantly, it was only $54,000. In addition, there was a reduction across the board. Supplies were down, personnel down, other services down, so they did a great job with that. Integrated connection fees were actually also up as well. They were up about $30,000 from last year, so that helped contribute a little bit to that rate moderation as well. So the overall proposed rate increase is 0.62% for the system average. On the sewer side, here we have, obviously, the biggest piece of information is the assets. Again, we had this discussion last year as well, and we'll go into it a little bit more detail in the next slide, but about $45 million were built into the rate study for what's been spent to date for the biodigestion program. That, the biodigestion-related assets are about 5% of the 5.62. And then there was also significant work done at the integrated system, again, at the wastewater resource recovery facility. They did a whole overhaul on the admin lab renovation, so all of that contributed as well. Let's see here. On the O&M side, the department did an exceptional job. We started really working hard to, to understand that we have to accommodate other pieces of the biodigestion as well that are not capitalizable, two of which were the DTE and the consumers' interconnect contracts. Both of those were $2.2 million alone, so our department worked extremely hard to reduce as much O&M expenses as they could to accommodate for those in O&M. Everything else that is listed below are all known cost adjustments, so those are all things that we're working on right now that have to be done, but they were not, they were able to be put into the study to account for because they have to be worked on this year, but they were not done as of June 30th, for example. One of those is the Ash Lagoon remediation, which is actually a environment, Great Lakes and Energy Division, our state of Michigan partners mandate. Another one is some biodigestion-related work as well that needs to be put into O&M this year. We have a CSX soil contamination study, and then other plant work that's happening as well, integrated again. As we discussed on the two slides ago, that build volume was down again as well, so that was down 0.84%, so that contributed to the rate increase, too. And then the CSO debt service requirement was up as well, and that's just the regular debt schedules that were set when those bonds were created. So on the decreases side, other operating revenues were up, so inventory sales were up as well. Circuit breaker credit, excuse me, that penalty revenue, they actually had some remaining leftover from last year that was able to be fed into the sewer study, which helped bring that down, so that's a nice benefit as well. Connection fees and surcharge revenue is also up for the year, so that's great. The overall proposed rate increase shook out to 7.92%. So on the next slide, we have the biodigestion project update. We really talked about this in depth last year as well. At this time last year, the budget was about $788,000 more than what the budget finalized as, and that was due to, since we brought this last year to everyone's attention, the phosphorus recovery piece has been finalized, so that was nice as well. Some October 2020 updates, the RINs market price, which is those renewable identification numbers, that's the biogas that will be sold based on the renewable energy gas that comes off of the digesters. That has rebounded to about $1.42 per gallon, which is about 50% to the high in 2018, so that's still very good news. It's been much lower than that over the last year or so. All bids have been finalized. The timing of the project completion was impacted, as well as the generated revenue due to COVID-19. So the tentative scheduled completion is Tank 2, November 2020; Tank 1, January of '21; the concentrated waste tank, or Tank 3, is February of '21; the RNG system, which is that, what processes the RINs, is fall of 2020, and then the phosphorus recovery is also fall of 2020, so those are both still on schedule. This is important to understand, as the rate, the rate methodology requires that any asset that is done and operational by December 31st should be put into service through the rate study. So many of those assets were using the preload process we'll discuss below. So last year at this time, we came and talked to the commission about a phase-in of $30 million. We met with our utility advisory board as well, and we raised rates 3.49% with the intention of approximately 8% increase estimated for this rate study for the digester alone. So after using all the factors for this rate study and understanding that ROI is down and other factors as well, other assets have been down that we have been really focusing on this, this massive digester project and all the scope of it. So we phased in the additional $45 million that have been spent to date using the same methodology that we used last year, and that accounted for about a 5% rate increase, a 5% of the 7.92. It also allows us to retain our debt coverage, which is a bond ordinance around that 1.40X and maintain our bond rating. And one thing that's always great to mention always going forward is that rates can, of course, be mitigated by additional operational cost control efforts, which we are doing. You know, affordability and cost control are always on the forefront of our mind, and that projected rate savings in the future from the biodigestion system is due to that, the sale of that renewable identification numbers, liquid industrial byproduct as well. So it's going to have sales revenue also that will feed back in, and it will be allocated out to those integrated customers based on integrated revenue, is the same way that the integrated cost is. So that rate recovery is coming, it just, it takes time for the gas to build and for that, those sales to take place. So those are good things to note as well. What has not changed, this is the same as last year, we still have the same strong renewable energy and sustainability benefits, reduction in electricity, and then we also have a reduction in sludge volumes, which decreases disposal costs. One of the other very costly pieces of 2020 is just how costly disposal has been for everyone across the board. So still very good, this project is doing really great, still very good benefits, and, you know, on schedule. It's much lower than what we had thought it was going to be from last year, being the 8% versus the 5%, so good news for the biodigestor. Onto the circuit breaker calculation. So what this is, is we call it circuit breaker, but it's the mechanism to address affordability. So what this is, is that our retail customers, we collect penalty revenue from their customers, obviously, as well. So this revenue is allocated out to those customers based on percentage of excess rate, whatever their rate increase percentage is, in excess of the system average. They will be, it will bring down that rate increase for them. So 87.5% goes to the city and the customer communities that are retail customers. The other 12.5% goes, and penalty revenue goes to our individual circuit breaker, which is the mechanism to help individuals with utility bill assistance. So that is actually facilitated by Kent County Community Act as well. This year, well, in addition, we also supplement it with $80,000 of non-operating revenue, which is rental revenue from Cool Brook, which we run out to our fire department for training. This year, at this current time, the current calendar year, 2020 is about 53% of usage for that individual circuit breaker fund over 2019. So our utility business office and administrative officer, Samara Giffel, has worked very closely with KCCA, and they have stated that the non-operating funds from 2020 are likely to roll over to next year. So obviously, those funds that are available for next year are down quite a bit due to the waiver of that, it's almost exact, the waiver of the penalty revenue during the stay-at-home order. However, there's going to be funds that are going to roll over that. Non-operating revenue from this year will roll over to help assist and fund that program. At this time, we're not seeing an uptick of assistance requests. Fortunately, there have been several avenues to help customers as well, so I think that they're being able to keep up. In addition, that, that rollover funds will help any funding short, any funding shortfalls for next year. Ms. Giffel's also been really leading the work with the city, as well as KCCA, to utilize the Senate Bill 690's assistance for payment. The W Care program looks to, it's actually looking now to assist about 1,100 customers for us, which is about $361,000 of arrears as well. Utilizing that program, too, about 58 customers were also prevented from being added to the tax roll. So the programs that are out there, and, you know, affordability was already at the forefront of our discussions out at the water and sewer utilities, so we'll continue researching grant programs and other options, as well as working with other communities to see what's working for them as well. So the overall 2021 rate impact by customer community. This slide is not new, but I did add a couple of features to it, just because it's a little bit, I think, hard to read. Retail communities are the first piece of that. Retail communities, it's one good thing to understand, is the distinction between the two. These are charges that are assessed directly to their user, individual user, based on water consumption. That includes a readiness to serve for their meter size and a commodity based on volume. The city of Grand Rapids maintains our assets, and we build users directly. On the wholesale side, we, the charges are direct, are assessed directly to the customer community based on a master meter at that point of service, so we don't meter their individual customers. They meter them, they collect penalty revenue on their own, which is why they do not benefit from the circuit breaker within this function, because they collect all that, they choose to bill their customer community members as they see fit. The customer community also maintains their own assets as well. That's two good distinctions to point out. So the retail customer communities are subject, subject to that retail, that, that customer and community circuit breaker, the penalty revenue to help bring down that rate. All of our customer community members are also able to do any, a buy-down for their rate impact at any point in time as well. So those are a couple of mechanisms that help out others. But on the Grand Rapids side, you can see there is a 0.05% reduction for our Grand Rapids residents for water, and there is a 6.75% increase for sewer customers. What this translates to is that the average quarterly bill for our city of Grand Rapids water customers will be 35 cents lower, or annually about $1.40 lower for water. On the sewer side, it will be about $6.70 greater than this current rate, which equates to about $26.8, $26.80 more. That net is about $25.40 more per year for our Grand Rapids residents. So we always end the rate study with just a general, this is kind of what the schedule looks like, this is what we've been working on. Last Friday, our customer community has received a hard copy, and it's been available online as well for the 30-day review and comment period of the preliminary study. Today, I'm just presenting the introduction of these rates, and this also initiates the 20-day public comment period. On November 19th, I will have the rate study presentation that I just gave with our utility advisory board members, as well as, obviously, any additional partner community requests or, you know, situations where they want to sit down and work through their rates or have us present to their commissions or anything will take place in late November as well. December 15th, we will, is the tentative date to bring the approval of the 2021 water and sewer rates by resolution to the city of Grand Rapids. So at this point in time, that's kind of where the schedule is at as well. This, the rate study is also filed with the clerk's office today. A physical copy is available, and then it is available online as well, the link below. Wait, I can't figure out how to stop sharing. I have no idea what I just did.
Cute family photo, though.
Thank you. Sorry, I have no idea what I'm doing.
I just, I just took the presenter role back, so we got it.
Perfect. Thank you for this, Joel, I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you for that presentation. City Manager, anything to add before we open it up for questions and comments from the commission? Bit, you're muted, City Manager. We can't, oh, we can't hear you.
City Manager, would you like me to step in? This is Molly.
Sure, Molly. Do you want to add any final thoughts?
I can step in. One thing we did want to do is, Joel, can you hand me the, make me a presenter really quick? We just wanted to go over really quick, springboarding off of Janessa's presentation here. This, the water and sewer rate study is actually the initial building block for the fiscal year 22 budget process. That's why we do the 20-day comment period for Grand Rapids, so both utilities can start engaging, getting public engagement with, you know, the departments as they, in an informed formulation of budget. City Manager, you want?
Excuse me, Ms. Can you hear me now, Mayor?
Yep.
Okay. In the essence of time, go ahead and close it. In the essence of time, we won't go through that briefing. What we'll do is just simply say that, just like there are opportunities for the public to provide feedback on the water rates through the utility advisory board, as well as public comment period, we're going to send a communication to the commission, as well as share that information with the community on all the ways that the public can provide input prior to the final budget submission, and there'll be over 20 different ways to do so. So we'll show the various boards that where the public can participate, from the Mobile GR Commission, to the Parks Advisory Board, to the Vital Streets Commission, to the numerous opportunities that the community has to weigh in prior to the budget being proposed by the manager to the commission, of course, during the budget process, to during the public hearing. So I just wanted to, to add that and inform the public that it's important to get involved early and not wait until the, the March, or April's the middle of the budget.
Thanks, City Manager. That's a good reminder. It's also a good reminder for me to remind my colleagues who serve with me on Economic Development Project Team that we do have a meeting at 12:30. So, so with that, Commissioners, I'll open it up for questions or comments. I'll, I'll start by adding my incredible thanks to everyone who helped with the election. I look forward to seeing the canvassing process finalized and the unofficial results become official results. And then we'll work with the, as the city clerk said, we'll work with the city attorney's office to determine next steps for the two charter amendments. All right, open it up for questions or comments. Why don't we first start with the, the election? We'll just go through all three of them. Any additional questions or comments for our city clerk about the election? Commissioner Lanier?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Joel, for your work on the elections, and thank you for the report that you presented. It's great to kind of hear in summary all of what transpired and how well you thought things transpired. So I just really wanted to say thank you and to all of the community partners who have been working so hard on elections over, like you said, probably the last year in, in preparing for this day. I think I want to give a shout out to Commissioner Isasi. She has been championing elections this cycle and has partnered and been meeting and canvassing and doing so many other things just to make sure that she's participated in getting people registered, as well as getting people to the polls. And finally, to the electorate for their engagement and participation. You know, I'm joking with Dallas because he voted in person at City Hall a few days prior to the election, and the day of the election, I was in line and voted in a shorter period of time than he did. I was 10, 10 minutes, and he was like 25, so I think that just speaks to how much work that went into making sure people had an opportunity to vote early enough so that it could lessen the lines on Election Day, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll add my, my thanks to Commissioner Isasi. She did jump in and help in many areas as we geared up for this election, so thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, you have a question or comment? Oh, you're on mute.
Thank you for that. I think being the one who was, you know, most recently elected, that, that thrill of going door-to-door safely, it's something I don't want to lose, lose sight of, and given the charter amendments, it's something that we're probably not going to be able to lose sight of, so we'll save that for another day, but I just want to express my thanks. I was prepped to be receiving calls from individuals and different groups, and I have to say I didn't, I was a little offline last week, but I didn't, I didn't get any calls. I don't think I got any calls through 311 from constituents who had any concerns. As our city clerk mentioned, I was able to see the process at our last city commission meeting as I was at City Hall, and so I'm grateful that there are especially, I think, no concerns with, with harassment or intimidation. We had good weather. What I don't want us to lose sight of is the people that were those first-time voters or who, people who engaged with us voting for that first time. And so as we continue to move through and, and work towards those official results, what are some ways that we can engage those individuals to make sure that they not only voted in that presidential election, but to, to continue to vote in other elections that are, that are all very important? that are, that are all very important? So, um, uh, city clerk and I will be setting up some time to just be kind of talking through some of those opportunities, um, and I look forward to, to continuing this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, commissioners, any other questions or comments about the election update? I'm sure we'll get, um, so, uh, city clerk, just to confirm, you'll provide us an additional update on, uh, any other data that you are able to pull together, and then you'll let us know once the canvassing is finalized? Okay, great. All right, then let's move on to the second update. Any questions for Chief Payne or Deputy Chief Kittle on their presentation? Uh, Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, mayor, uh, and thank you, chief and deputy chief, uh, for the presentation on this morning. Um, I really would like to take an opportunity to, um, uh, hopefully, um, fill in the blank for some of our constituents, uh, our residents in Grand Rapids regarding the, the matter of ShotSpotter. I, I don't know if everyone, uh, understands, um, you know, how this, how this came to be. We have, uh, we, uh, the city of Grand Rapids, um, had, uh, been approached by or had been in conversation with the county, uh, in particular around, uh, dollars, CARES Act dollars. And, um, the county, uh, commission, or the, the, Kit County, uh, presented us with what I would best, would best be described as a restricted, uh, grant or restricted amount of money, uh, that, that they said that they'd like to see used for ShotSpotter. And so there are, we have constituents, uh, who are under the impression that, uh, the city of Grand Rapids is utilizing general fund dollars or just, you know, our budget dollars to, uh, pay for ShotSpotter, when in fact, that is not the case. I, I think that, uh, that is a, uh, there's a lot of misunderstanding, there's a lot of, of, uh, of, of folks who are just, uh, again, they're, in, in the, in the correspondence that I have received, I think my colleagues have received the same correspondence. It has indicated a desire, uh, folks who have, who have indicated that they don't want, or don't, they don't think that ShotSpotter is a good investment, and that they instead would like to see dollars invested into cure violence and other, uh, programs. Uh, but again, I don't think the commu, or the, the public fully understands that the county is very clearly indicating that the dollars, uh, must be used for ShotSpotter, those $500,000. And so, uh, I've taken the opportunity, th- thank you, you, you mentioned, uh, deputy chief, um, the, uh, the report, uh, that came from the policing project. I had an opportunity a couple of years ago to participate in a, a two-day, um, workshop slash, um, time of gathering in, at the, uh, NYU School of Law with the Policing Project, and, uh, am on their, their mailing list. And so I was very much aware of, uh, their position as it pertains to ShotSpotter. And then maybe did a, and colleagues, again, I would, I would highly recommend you take, uh, Deputy Chief Kittle up on his offer to, uh, to take a look at the report that came back from the Policing Project, who I hold in very high regard. Uh, this is a group out of, uh, the NYU School of Law that, uh, all they do is focus on, on issues around policing. And they pretty much laid out their, their overview and, and their takeaways. Um, the same can be said for the Lawyers Committee, um, that came, uh, by way of the ACLU and their position on ShotSpotter. Uh, I think that it's, that's worth a, a read as well. And, uh, I will tell you that I took the opportunity to speak to a number of African-American leaders in respective communities throughout the country, including Los Angeles, Wilmington, Delaware, Baltimore, Maryland, St. Louis, Missouri, South Bend, Indiana, Little Rock, Arkansas, Omaha, Nebraska, and Columbus, uh, Ohio. And who, because they, those are cities that were listed, uh, on the, uh, ShotSpotter website. Uh, and so I reached out to, uh, African-American leaders in those respective communities to get their take on ShotSpotter. And, uh, I didn't get a whole lot of, of negative feedback from, uh, from folks in those cities. Uh, I think it's fair to say that the concern that many people have, it's, it's similar. Uh, that includes the concerns that, um, that our community here in Grand Rapids has in terms of overreach, or the potential of it, uh, of ShotSpotter being a tool that is used in a way that, uh, picks up conversations, uh, in, in the, in the area in which it's been dispatched, and, and there's concern about it, again, playing a role other than the role that it's intended to play. And so I will say that, again, I took the opportunity to have these conversations with, again, other, uh, African-American leaders throughout the country who have utilized or have, who are in cities that have utilized ShotSpotter. And again, I got, I got, I got pretty good feedback, uh, from, from those, those colleagues. Um, I, I wanted to say that, um, I have not changed in, in terms of my, my desire to want to see perhaps a, a compromise that can be, uh, uh, created with the county. I believe that we can, uh, still make that happen where, uh, there are dollars that are used, uh, for ShotSpotter because of their, uh, their desire to want to see, to want to see used for that, but also perhaps the potential of, uh, part of those dollars, part of that $500,000 to be used for cure violence and/or other, um, efforts, uh, that would address the issue of community violence. I do want to take an opportunity to really recognize and thank, uh, uh, our 19 colleagues who are on the county commission, uh, for their willingness to lean in on this, in particular for the leadership of Mandy Bolter, who is the, the chair, as well as, uh, uh, my colleague in the city, Robert Womack, who has been a stalwart and has been very consistent in his efforts to really speak to the issue of community violence. Uh, Robert has shown up consistently, and, uh, that is not to be ignored. Uh, and so I know that he has worked, uh, significantly with his colleagues on the county commission to garner support. Um, and I just, again, I want to, I want to recognize that really this is, I think, a great example of what I hope would be the trend for the future, where we have, uh, more of a, a common understanding with our colleagues on the county commission, uh, recognizing that if one part of the body is not well, then it affects the whole body. And so I, I, I think it's fair to say that, uh, that we have colleagues on the county commission, which as we all know, is a partisan, uh, body, uh, that recognize the, uh, you know, the, the, the damage, uh, that is being done, uh, to the whole, to the entirety of the county, based on the, uh, the growing number of homicides in our beloved, uh, city. And so, uh, chief, what I would ask of you, uh, again, I'm, I'm, I am, I am in a position where I would like to, again, I want to support you and your, your strategic plan. You have asked for, 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 uh, technology such as ShotSpotter. Uh, but I also want to, uh, continue down the path of seeing if we can find a way to, uh, utilize those dollars, uh, in a way that would also be a benefit to other, um, efforts to address community violence. Uh, I'm sure you would agree that there's no silver bullet, uh, no pun intended, uh, but that there has to be an approach that really speaks to, um, trying to get at this, uh, not just from a technical or technology perspective, but, you know, again, human resources. The fact that, uh, I still believe that in everything that we do moving forward as it pertains to law enforcement in particular and community, we have to have a unwavering commitment to, uh, really focus on that, uh, those things that prevent, uh, crime. Crime prevention, uh, should be the, the priority and not so much intervention. And so we can get at that if we are, uh, focused, uh, quite honestly, on utilizing human resources, in particular, uh, uh, individuals, again, who have a lived experience that can participate, uh, as interrupters or street outreach workers as part of something like cure violence, as well as, um, as I've stated before, uh, the plethora of community-based neighborhood associations that we have, that I think could play an even greater role in crime prevention. Uh, we have heard it time and time again, Commissioner Isasi and I, we meet regularly with our, uh, with our colleagues who serve as heads of their respective neighborhood associations, and you have a, a body that is ready and willing, that knows, that, that knows that, that their respective neighborhoods better than any of us. Uh, I think that coupled with an ongoing relationship with community police officers, uh, could really net us, uh, uh, some, 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 some very substantive, um, outcomes that would help to turn the tide as it pertains to community violence. But again, I think it all has to be enshrined, or the foundation has to be an unwavering commitment to crime prevention, uh, because that is, I think, uh, that is ultimately, uh, I think a significant part of the answer, and I think it will get us to a better place. So again, colleagues, I, I, I am, I am wanting to continue down the path of, and I believe that the county, our, our colleagues in the county would be open to, uh, the idea of splitting those dollars, uh, where, again, it would, we would have dollars that would go toward ShotSpotter, but also dollars that would go toward, uh, cure violence, uh, and/or other programs. So, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Rappert?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Um, just a, one question and, and a few comments. You know, my question is, well, I'll get, I'll do my comments first. Um, you know, for me, I think that when I think about crime prevention, you know, first of all, I want to thank the police department for bringing, we ought to explore every single possibility for reducing gun violence in our community, and they've brought forth this as one way that they think could help. For me, it really comes down to the order in which we implement, and if there's dollars to go, you know, 90 yards down the field, then there's dollars to go 90 yards down the field. But I believe that we absolutely have to start with seeking the wisdom of the community to say, how do you think that you, that we can reduce violence? Which is why cure violence has been something that I continue to be, um, an advocate as, as being our first investment in, for crime prevention, because it turns to the community, it says, um, what do you believe i- is necessary in order to reduce violence? And I, I, I believe that that's the place that we've got to start. Similarly, you know, violence, historically, the roots of violence is from a lack of investment, which is why I continue to advocate for that, those funds for the Third Equity Fund, Neighborhood of Focus Fund, to be, uh, a robust and substantive investment in communities to say, again, how could you, as the community, um, change this investment structure in, in a way that you believe is going to change conditions to, to decrease violence? So, yeah, I, I, I think that ShotSpotter, drones, both have their merits, as well as, you know, there are definitely some, some things that are, um, you know, questions to be asked about it around leasing and owning, around where does the data go, around, you know, again, when do we have check-ins with the communi, community around expansion, all some of the stuff that, that Deputy Chief Kittle said that they're, they're, they're planning to explore. Um, but that's just where I'm at. My one question really is, December 17th is our next meeting. My understanding was that the funds needed to be used from the county by November 15th. So, um, can somebody just give me an answer about, about that timeline portion of this?
I'll go ahead and, uh, respond. I think that the county asked all of the local units of government that were allocated funding to have those agreements in place, funds spent, uh, encumbered by November 15th, uh, so they can initially begin their reimbursement. I think we've talked to them, uh, due to the lateness of the allocation for the additional $500,000 for gun technology and crime prevention, youth violence prevention, to see if we can, um, have until the end of the year, which is, um, as, as they understand our federally mandated deadline to exhaust these funds. So if that's the case, we would have a few more opportunities to both enter into agreements and, um, try to utilize the, the allocations for reimbursement. So, so this is on a reimbursement base. So it's proof of purchase, proof of encumbrance, and reimbursement. The concerns that, uh, the staff, our staff, our attorneys, their attorneys, uh, and, and others have, have had around the utilization of funds is the county is unwilling to go beyond any encumbrances in 2020. So we cannot pay for future year's costs. So even though we can demonstrate that, um, there is a uptick in violence due to COVID, and we're responding to the violence with, uh, crime prevention efforts, uh, gun technology, uh, uh, efforts being one, uh, the expectation is those funds be encumbered and exhausted by the end of the year. What we have, um, tried to negotiate, uh, with the county is, in addition to, um, ShotSpotter, which, which is a multi-year implementation, uh, have other eligible expenses that we know are, um, are supported by the CARES Act, uh, to be used for the allocation, which we can easily, uh, satisfy the requirement for reimbursement this year. And we know that we have those because we've done it through our previous reimbursements through the, uh, public safety payroll. So if we, if we're able to successfully do that, um, then, uh, and, and as you've seen in the presentation, we have had the need for increased enforcement, increased staffing, uh, those neighborhood outreach efforts that the chief mentioned earlier has all been due to COVID. Those are all COVID-related eligible expenses in line with the federal act. We need to come, agreement with the county for, for that. If we're able to do that, then we can decelerate cut the, the, the speed of implementation on some of the other technology issues, as well as the, the cure violence. There's no way we will have a cure violence program up and running by the end of the year. So the, the, the trigger is, uh, or the key is, what can we do to satisfy, uh, the requirement for the CARES Act, uh, eligibility? And I, I think there's another expectation, as Commissioner Jones, uh, indicated, those that advocated for this collaborative effort on the county side, I think were very intentional, that they wanted to see some, some, um, advanced outcomes regarding gun technology. So it is, it is a, it is a puzzle that, that we are trying to piece together, and we're doing the best that, that we can. Uh, and I, I think the chief and I both agree, we're, we're, you know, there, there's another piece of the puzzle that, that's, that's outstanding. They had another tranche of, uh, a half a million dollars for, um, crime prevention that was community-oriented. So to your point, listening to the wisdom of the community, making, utilizing these community-engaged, community-led efforts, and we are unaware of the outcome of that effort. So they, they, the, the county has led a community-based initiative for crime prevention. And if by chance, um, some of those awards are in line with evidence-based kind of models that are community-led, the, the money that we have budgeted, uh, in the police department, and I think the $75,000, we can, this commission can make a decision to co-invest in, in those efforts as well, but it's still unknown to us what the final outcome is. So there are a lot of moving pieces, and what we hope to have is, is, uh, a, a more woven-together answer with, with all the components that you asked for by next week. We will continue to meet with the county.
Thanks, city manager. Uh, so hopefully we will find out, uh, what, uh, awards have been granted with that $500,000 that was, um, led through United Way, or the United Ways being the fiduciary. Uh, and, and Commissioner Rappert, I just, I just want to add, I, I appreciate your comments. I couldn't agree more. Uh, you know, cure violence continues to be a priority to me. I talked about this at our retreat, uh, and, you know, crime prevention is a priority, but we also have to have a very holistic approach when it comes to public safety, which is what I believe the chief laid out in his strategic plan, that you have robust prevention and intervention that is more effective, particularly with individuals experiencing a mental health crisis. And then how do we intervene quickly when there is a crime? Uh, I too have reached out to some of my colleagues throughout the country, mayors who, uh, where their police department utilizes technology, uh, and have heard back from some of them, but I'm hearing back from more this week. Uh, and again, it's a tool, it's one tool that, um, departments all over this country utilize to help them respond quickly to gun violence when gun violence does take place. So, um, I appreciate your comments. Uh, Commissioner O'Connor, did I see your hand up? Okay, who else? Commissioner Isasi?
Thank you, mayor. Um, thanks for the presentation, chief and DC Kittle. Um, a, a number of the questions, uh- Um, a number of the questions, uh, my colleague, Commissioner Repper, did, did, um, ask, I think, um, particularly about the timing, because we've had a lot of people ask that, and we discussed it at our last meeting. Um, you know, I know in tonight's packet, um, our city clerk has noted the 110 communications about ShotSpotter, and I don't know if they are pro or, or supportive of. We certainly, I think Commissioner Lanier talked about receiving a number of them, or maybe Commissioner Jones, uh, um, in our email packets, and I'm, I'm certainly going through those. Um, my question is around, uh, we asked, I think that question about flexibility was asked the last time, I think Commissioner Lanier, you asked that about, is there any flexibility with the county? So, we're here, and, and thank you all. I know I talked to, um, um, our city attorney yesterday and getting updates from Molly. So, I, we know that it's, I know that it's not without all of you going back and forth. Um, it still represents, I think, um, some frustration as, from residents about through the engagement and what does this mean, and, and just the lack of time. And so, I, I, I still want to recognize that and acknowledge that, that, that people, at least a number of people that are writing me are feeling that way. Um, I did want to ask a question specifically to follow up from a note that I had for myself from the last meeting. Uh, DC Kittle, you talked about doing some initial or additional engagement for drones. And in my note from last time, we talked, I think City Manager, you talked about that, then the shots, they were billed as ShotSpotter engagement meetings, but did, did you all talk about drones at all in those meetings, or was, were they not discussed?
Commissioner, it was mentioned as something that we're going to be pursuing in the future. They were not discussed in length in regards to the, uh, you know, how the drones would be used.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks Commissioner. Commissioner Lanier?
Thank you. Um, so Chief and DC, I think I, I, I think pretty much everything that has been stated, um, I am, you know, thinking along those same lines. I just have a couple of comments and questions. Um, I, I think City Manager, your, um, response to, um, Commissioner Repper's question, um, I think also responds to the, some of the statements that Commissioner Jones made about the funding. It sounds like the fund, that there is already, and not that it needs to be negotiated, but flexibility in those dollars and how those dollars are, are to be spent. And I think if that's the case, I'm curious to know, um, I know we, we talked about this during the, um, um, retreat, but what would that bring the dollar amount to, that we've spent on staffing, um, through CARES dollars for public safety? Um, I think there was a number, I don't know, 500,000? Then it seemed like there was something being added to that the last time we were talking about it during the, during the retreat. So, then I'm curious if we were to, to use this 500,000 for staffing specifically, because we know that some of the, the way we're structuring, I think it was even in the presentation with some of the weekends that we've been doing, um, a lot of overtime to try and reduce violence. So, just curious about that number. Um, I think the other point is that, um, with, with ShotSpotter in particular, I think we have to be cautious about how much we're disclosing about, um, what we're recommending in terms of implementing ShotSpotter. Um, because what we have found in our city is that, um, violent acts are moving across the city. And with ShotSpotter being so stationary, I think the result of that is going to be that the, the crime will move as opposed to in, installing ShotSpotter and then, you know, suddenly there won't be any shots fired. And I think with that in mind, I look at this as a regional, um, that ShotSpotter as a tool could probably be something more regionally, um, installed, and maybe it then should be housed at the county, um, because then it could cross multiple jurisdictions. And, um, and they could look at ways in which they would want to have the technology in the communities that, based on the data that they would want it housed in. And certainly, um, Grand Rapids should be at that table to have some discussions about crime data, um, in order to kind of inform, inform that work. Um, the other thing that I was curious about is, uh, to, to Commissioner, Commissioner Repper's point about the order in which distribution is happening. So, if, if, if the feedback that we're hearing from the community, and I too hear from residents who are struggling with gunfire and, and violence happening next door to them and across the street and around the corner, um, and want something to be done, um, but I'm also hearing some of the feedback that you've heard, um, consistently about the social programs. And so, if there's flexibility in how the dollars could be used, um, if there, you know, and, and to your point, City Manager, how quickly can we bring anything up to speed? So, it's likely that we need to, to look at existing programs that are already around. How do we meet the needs of the social programs that the community is suggesting while we're also trying to find ways to, um, um, have measures in place to reduce the violent, violent acts as well? And I think that there, there possibly could be a healthy balance with that. Um, I, I'm, I was surprised when you said that there hadn't been any engagement on the drones at the, at the ShotSpotter community meetings, because I know Commissioner Isasi specifically requested that, because part of the challenges that we're facing is that we keep going to the same people asking for input, and it's frustrating. So, this same community has been providing feedback on violence reduction strategies, um, for several months now. And we, you know, had a forum where we really could have, um, outlined all of the components of the drones while we were also outlining the components of another technology in ShotSpotter. And then we could have gotten that information. If time is of the essence, I think we need to move a little bit more swiftly in how we're trying to engage the public to get the feedback. So, now we're here, and if, and if we, if we were at a point where we were ready to, to make the purchase for the drones, we can't make that because we haven't engaged the community, which is a requirement of our surveillance policy. And so, I, I, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with all of that. It just seems really haphazard. And I know, to Commissioner Isasi's point earlier, this isn't, the, the haphazardness isn't necessarily to be laid at the feet of any city staff as much as we've, we've been presented with something, and now we're trying to figure out a way to best utilize the dollars that have been, um, presented to us. And I think that it's multifaceted. I, I really want to see the neighborhood policing model that the chief has talked about. I want to hear the dollars associated with that so that we can know when and how that will be implemented. Those are, those are the things that I think systematically, a strategic plan will help us to be able to get through. And I know that this is now, um, this is now kind of throwing a monkey wrench into the previous existing plan, and, and I don't know, how do we bring it all together and make some systematic decisions so that it doesn't feel to the public as haphazard as it possibly feels to me?
Thanks Commissioner. I think, uh, there's a couple of questions there and there. I'll let, um, the chief or Deputy Kittle respond to. I, I appreciate your comments, especially about input and engagement. I think one other, um, one of the, we're reaching out to, that I've had conversations with are, um, family members whose loved ones have been victims of gun violence, um, and, and make sure that we're also having conversations with them. Uh, so, I'll turn it over to Chief Payne.
Before the, yeah, please, Mayor, if I could before, uh, the police department, uh, offers some perspective. Because I want to be clear that, uh, the flexibility that we are asking for is what we're pursuing. And we have not gotten that confirmed, um, response from the county. We've been asking for confirmation, both from the administrative staff as well as their legal staff, about giving us some alternatives to, um, more expeditionally, exped- excuse me, expeditionally comply with CARES Act requirements. And we think we haven't figured out, we have not gotten that confirmed. Do know, uh, absent that confirmation, we will not be bringing any, um, uh, additional expenditures that will not have a reimbursement, um, source. So, they, that was, that was the way that they approved this. That was their public policy discussion. This was additional relief funding through CARES. And so, we are not going to in, uh, have additional indebtedness without having that confirmation. So, we are trying to resolve that, we hope, uh, that they will be very, uh, collaborative and willing, um, partners with us, given, given this, this short deadline. Um, with respect to the regional issues, that we're, we're, we're certainly, just like we are with all the other issues, whether it's housing or economic development, we are, we want to partner with them on regional issues, but do know that it is still, we will still be, um, focusing on the same implementation factors in our city. Because, uh, it is, it will be our public right-of-way, our public assets, and so it still will be a city determination on how we want to use, uh, that technology in the community, but in collaboration with the county. And so, even if there were more communities looking at it, the, 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 the foundational issues that we're discussing now about where and how to install it are, will still be, uh, at the forefront of consideration. Um, and I just want the, the Chief Kittle, down the middle Kittle, to clarify, um, the feedback that you all provided by the drones was given to the police department, and they incorporated it in their briefings that they had at the town halls. I think what the chief meant, we have no implementation plan for drone technology that we were bringing forward specifically like we were on ShotSpotter. But informing the community about the alternatives of drone utilization was a discussion, uh, during the town hall. Uh, but if you're asking, was there a specific implementation approach that we, uh, got from the community, well, that, that's a different, that's a different narrative. And I think the Chief Kittle may have been narrowly answering that question in that context, but I'll, I'll let him clarify if that's not the case.
Yeah, so City Manager, I think, I think that's an accurate, uh, perception. The two technologies, Commissioner, are, are very different. And we spent an hour and a half on each one of those, uh, town halls, and I think we would have spent, um, you know, at least double that. We still had some callers on the line at 7:30 that, uh, we, we took their information, but the, the town hall was actually ended. Um, so I think time-wise, it just would not have been perfect. I do want to reiterate, the ShotSpotter was not our number one priority. It's in our strategic plan. We started quickly on ShotSpotter because of the funding that became available through the county. Um, we're still very interested in the, uh, the drone technology, but I also want to make it clear, the drone technology is going to require personnel. And as we still are implementing our strategic plan, we've got to figure out where those personnel are going to come from, um, to operate those drones on a regular basis, because we are looking at it as a first responder. So, it's, it's kind of like a, I don't want to say 24/7, but it'd be full-time positions that we would be required to have to make this, uh, to the drone technology operate.
I think, thank you for those responses. And I think, um, City Manager, it was the article that I think I shared with you, um, regarding the flexibility of those dollars is, is, is contributing to the confusion. Um, and I forget, it might have been an M-Live article that, where it was stated that there was, there was flexibility. And so, I think that's part of, part of why people are thinking that, that, that was a done deal as opposed to it being something that's being negotiated still with the county.
Um, I, I don't know how else to say what has happened, is there was a policy decision by the electeds, and there is administrative implementation by the staff, and they seem not to be aligned in terms of the intent at this point. And so, we're trying to get better realignment on the county's, um, effort with, with, uh, with their intent to help us. And, uh, maybe the city attorney would, uh, or, um, have additional comment at this point, but I, 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 I don't know what else to, uh, advise, uh, in this public forum about where we are now, but that, that's, that's where we are.
I, I'm, I'm understanding your response clearly. Thank you.
Yeah. I, I would just, about the dollar amounts that, that have already been allocated from CARES funding to public safety, do you have that number?
Ms. Clarin, do you have the payroll, um, amount that we have been reimbursed, uh, through various, um, requests for COVID relief?
Um, well, as presented during the staff retreat, we've been giving, given 5 million specifically on the payroll, um, public safety payroll reimbursement program, plus, um, the CARES money we got from the county, 6.4 million. So, I don't know if you remember that slide from the retreat, but that's about 11 and a half million, where I am applying our public safety payroll expenses from fiscal year 20 against that to satisfy those grants. So, it falls to fund balance, and then I had a, a list of uses. So, there is still capacity. We talk about the 500,000, the county may, um, allow us, with the additional CARES money, the county may allow us to use. I would apply that against fiscal year 20 public safety payroll, because there's still capacity there. So, that frees us up to be able to use those funds for ShotSpotter or, or things like that. So, um, with, with that methodology, yeah, there is, I guess, I guess, I don't know if I really answered it.
Yeah. But yeah. Thank you.
And, you know, uh, Commissioners, I know, and then Commissioner Jones, it, it is, this is what happens when you have, um, multiple jurisdictions working together, and, and also when you're looking at dollars that have clear parameters, uh, federal parameters in place. So, I appreciate that, Molly. And, and Molly, just to confirm, when you say public safety, I know that CARES dollars, um, for payroll, it's police-fire dispatch, correct? Yeah. I just want to, I want to be clear, I think sometimes people think public safety very narrowly around police, but it's much broader than that. Uh, and I just.
Yeah, and I was going to say also to clarify, um, the public safety payroll reimbursement program, I know there's confusion over we can only use that for public safety expenses, but really, that was the methodology the state chose to allocate these funds. So, we're free to use it across our organization as well. So, so just keep that in mind.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Jones, and then I think, uh, there aren't any other, so I'll go Commissioner Jones.
I'm sorry, Commissioner O'Connor, Commissioner O'Connor has, has his hand up.
And then Commissioner Jones, and then we'll see if there's any final comments. Uh, it sounds like there are some things that we need to follow up on, and then we'll see if there's any questions about the, um, rate study and budget, uh, before we finish up and go to Economic Development Project Team. Uh, Commissioner O'Connor?
Thank you Mayor. Uh, yeah, quickly, just, uh, you know, the idea that ShotSpotter and/or drone technology is, you know, we, we continue to talk about being proactive and, uh, preventing violence, and these are, those are both very reactive, uh, actions towards the violence that's happening in our community. Uh, you know, certainly sharing the frustration with the process and, uh, the, the, the mandate from our partners at the county in terms of trying to dictate to us, uh, what we need to do. I appreciate their concern for the violence in our community, but, uh, you know, I, one strategy that seems to have worked, and we talked about it at the retreat, uh, last week, uh, was, you know, the, the times we put additional resources on the street, uh, in a proactive fashion and communicated to the public that we were going to be doing that has, has had positive outcomes. And so, you know, every single one of us pays tax dollars to, to support the county sheriff's department, and it's rare that I see a county sheriff's, uh, car, uh, in my community, uh, supporting my police department. So, as we, uh, move forward, I would, I would suggest or request that some of our folks at the county maybe consider, uh, providing some sheriff's resources in our community when we do our proactive, uh, violence prevention efforts on the weekends. Think that'd be a great way, uh, in which they could support violence prevention in Grand Rapids through, uh, through resources that already exists. So, rather than picking, uh, county roads on a Saturday night, maybe they could come downtown and, uh, support my officers in the work that they're doing.
Yeah, Mayor, just, just real quick, uh, I just want to say that I, I think that, once again, we, uh, a lot of this has to do with narrative or, or translation. I, I think that, uh, many in the community, um, are under the assumption that, you know, when we talk about, uh, the public safety payroll, uh, program, there is not a clear understanding that this is not the city, uh, utilizing our dollars to, uh, you know, put towards, uh, public safety payroll. But there is a mandate that's in place that very much, um, specifies that those dollars be used for payroll reimbursement. And I think that anything that we can do to firmly communicate to the community, you know, what we are, the position that we're in, and, and again, I, I, I would dare say that a lot of folks don't realize that, you know, these dollars aren't coming directly from the state to the city. They're coming from the feds to the state, to the county, to the city because of our size. The only city in the state that's getting direct dollars is Detroit because of its size, as is the case for other major cities throughout the country. And so, I think that, uh, anything that we can do to better communicate to our constituents, you know, what our options are, the better. Also, I want to. Also, when, you made a mention of it earlier, Mayor. I think what also gets lost in all of this, whether it's ShotSpotter, whether it's talking about pure violence or anything else. You talked about, you mentioned about the power of conversation or dialogue with families of those who have lost loved ones. You know, again, 31 homicides this year. And in my interaction with these families, what I quickly realize is, you know, if I were to talk with them specifically about ShotSpotter, whether the case may be, they, their desire is to find solutions to the issue of gun violence. They don't want what they're experiencing, they don't want other families in the city to experience. And so I think quite often, what we have is, we have a constituent, constituency in our city that feels very strongly in opposition to something like ShotSpotter, pure violence, whatever the case may be. But I think what they're missing is the ability to have candid conversations with those who are being the most impacted. And that's, those are two different conversations. So I totally understand how anyone could, you know, would be opposed to anything that would be seen as far reaching or overreaching with regards to technology. But I think what's missing is, you know, when you have an opportunity to have conversations with these families, which I have, you'd be surprised that they'd be okay with everything from ShotSpotter to anything else. Again, that would help to address this issue. And so I think it really speaks to the times that we're in. And that's why, again, I was very specific in, when I had my outreach with folks throughout the country, it was with black folk. It was with African American leaders throughout the country who have a very, you know, unique relationship with the African American community in their respective cities. And so, you know, once again, it's, you know, not trying to, you know, start too much of a, of a conversation. But once again, race matters in all of this, race matters. And so I think that we need to, all involved need to keep that in mind, both those who are stating their, you know, their, either their opposition or their support of something like ShotSpotter or pure violence, whatever the case may be, race matters in all of this, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, so I'll have the city manager follow up with the chief. And any outstanding questions or information that we need, we'll ask them to get that to us. So Commissioner.
Just one last, and I want to make sure that we highlight the partnership. Every time I believe the chief has requested resources from county, the county has been responsible. The sheriff has been responsible. So if there's a need for additional support on these special neighborhood events, the chief should accept that and if needed, make the request. But I don't think we've ever requested resources and they're not replied. Is that correct, Chief Payne?
That, that's correct. And I've had conversation with Sheriff Young and she has offered resources and we will be taking her up on it, both uniform and also detectives. So we've had those conversations and I intend to utilize the sheriff's department in the future as we continue with our safe neighborhood projects. Collaborated with the Michigan State Police to be involved in it. So anytime we've asked for resources, they've been available and offered.
Great, thanks, Chief. That's good to know and I appreciate you saying that. I know I've talked to the sheriff multiple times as well and she appreciates you and your leadership and your partnership. So, all right, Commissioners, any, I'm going to move us on to see if there's any questions about the, about the rate study. I just have one that I wrote down and then I'll see if you all have any questions or comments. My question was specific to the Circuit Breaker program. I'm glad to see that we are only 53% usage this year, but I am really concerned about families struggling as we continue to live through this pandemic. So, and City Manager, I don't know if you can answer this, or Molly, if we get to the point where we expend all of those dollars, have we, are we prepared to come back and add more dollars in there specifically for Grand Rapids families?
I can answer that. We do have the option of using more non-operating revenue from the system. So, so we could do an evaluation of funds available, if there are. But obviously, we'd want to look at the financial health of both the water and sewer funds before we did that. We could also choose as, you know, specific to the city of Grand Rapids, if we did want to set aside money with our COVID relief plan towards that effort as well. We can do that for our, for our residents specifically here in Grand Rapids. So, so we do have some options.
Okay, great. Thanks, Molly. All right, Commissioners, other questions about the water and sewer rate study? Okay, all right, seeing none, I'll see if the city manager has any final questions or comments before we recess our morning meetings and come back together tonight. That should give us just a few minutes before we move into Economic Development Project Team. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the staff for the hard work. I know these are difficult issues that we continue to wade through and we'll continue to take your feedback and follow up on all that we heard today.
Great, okay, thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. And again, I wish Commissioner Moody could have been here. I know he was around the Public Safety Committee meeting when this topic was presented. And I know that he has already followed up with the chief and the city manager. But we'll, we'll make sure that we follow up with him and he has access to this presentation as well. All right, have a good afternoon. Hopefully you can grab some lunch and then some of you, I'll see you in just a few minutes at Economic Development.